Regular session of the County Commission to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Davy Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bauer heads. Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we're just going to lay claim to a couple scriptures. One of them says that when two or three of us are gathered together in your name, you are there in our midst. And so we today gather in your name and we invite you into our midst, Father, to guide and direct us. Furthermore, First Thessalonians, Chapter 5, verse 11, says, "Therefore encourage one another and build each other up," just as in fact you are doing. So today we encourage each other. We give thanks for the blessings of the season. We give you particular thanks for the moisture, Father, that has helped our farm community. And today, Father, as we gather to do county business, we have just asked for your presence, for your blessing and your guidance. Do we give you that thanks today in Jesus' name? Amen.
Thank you. Chair comments this morning is that childcare continues to be one of the critical issues in our community. And I was scheduled to have Jennifer Cunningham of Community Day Care follow up with those comments. The little leaders of Garden City, Kansas will be the new branding of that center. And they're launching some new programs as well and having an open house in which the County Commission is invited to attend on July 13th at 6:30 PM at the daycare center building. I don't have any other comments on the chair?
Time and city?
July 13th at 6:30.
Six thirty.
Apologize to the clerk for not getting that to you sooner, but I got it this morning. Jennifer was going to be with us. She's a mother first. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
It moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. In our business agenda this morning, the first item on the agenda is a motor grader purchase. And Gennaro?
Yes?
Would you come tell us about why we want to spend that much money on a road grader that's got a super duper engine and all-wheel drive and all of those things? Please explain to the public.
We'll try.
Please announce yourself for the public.
I'm Gennaro Spino, the Division Coordinator for Public Works. The Board of County Commissioners is asking to approve the purchase of a new motor grader for the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department is requesting to purchase a new 150 all-wheel-drive motor grader to update and upgrade the grader fleet. This new grader is larger than the other graders within our fleet. It will be used for road construction and replace a 2010 model 140M with 14,740 hours. The 2010 140M will be used as a spare grader. And the current spare grader, which is a 1994 model 140G with 30,000-plus hours, will be sold. The benefits of the 150 all-wheel drive is its all-wheel drive, more weight, more horsepower, and a better resale value when it's time for rotation. When working in soft, underfoot conditions where traction can be a challenge, the all-wheel drive can give the additional power to the ground needed to work more efficiently when in mud, sand, gravel, and snow, and on sloped areas during the use of ground-engaging tools. The added traction helps reduce slipping and sliding, making for a more accurate work site. The operating gross vehicle base weight for the 150 all-wheel drive is 40,380 pounds with a CAT 9.3 engine, producing a variable horsepower range of 210 to 272 horsepower. Compared to the 140M with an operating gross vehicle base weight of 33,356 pounds with a CAT 7 engine, producing a variable horsepower range of 183 to 213. It makes the 150 all-wheel drive more efficient and better equipped for the work it will do. The quote for the motor grader was obtained through Sourcewell. Sourcewell streamlines the procurement process by soliciting bids and awarding contracts. This saves the county time and money from doing our own in-house bidding process. Foley Equipment's bid came in at $464,993 with zero cents. The purchase agreement was sent to legal counsel for review. The Board may approve the purchase of a new motor grader from Foley Equipment for $464,993 zero cents to be paid from the special equipment fund and authorize the county administrator to sign the purchase agreement. Or the Board may not approve the purchase of a new motor grader. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the purchase of a new motor grader from Foley Equipment for $464,993 zero cents to be paid from the special equipment fund and authorize the county administrator to sign their purchase agreement. This purchase will come out of the Public Works Special Equipment Fund. There is currently 1.9 million in this fund. Are there any questions?
Commissioners?
In the past, we've always leased motor graders. Was lease not an option on this type of machine, or?
It was an option, but we had been sitting inside monies in the equipment reserve fund to make the purchase outright.
Okay. Secondly, is it, do you have to order this machine, or is it in stock?
In stock. It's already on hold for us.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Not necessarily a question as much as a comment, perhaps. There's only one bid, but this is Sourcewell, so that for the public serves as competitive bids. They've already been through the bid process, correct? Is this something worth mentioning so the public would know what's taking place?
Do you see a need for more machines of this size or this specialty machine for some of the heavy-duty road construction work?
Road construction work. I've been a grader operator for quite a few years. And when we do the road construction, our 140Ms, even the other graders that we have, they have a hard time ripping the surface of the road to be able to mix the base and set a new base. They just struggle big time with that. This is mainly for that purpose. Also, with dealing with the rain this past few weeks, dealing with mud holes, our graders can only do so much. They struggle to clear a mud hole for traffic.
Okay, I guess that answers. You're anticipating larger machines?
Yes. Yes, I do. And that is the idea, to start with this one and see what it's going to do for us, and see what it does, what it promised to do. And we're going to try it in the construction side.
Perhaps, yes.
Did you have another one?
No further questions, but I do have a comment. I would like to congratulate you and your staff for what you've done in the last 10 days.
Oh, thank you very much. I'll pass that.
Opposite phone calls instead of complaining. I've had thank you calls. So I want to congratulate you and your staff for what you've done.
I'll let them know. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and I would just add on to that. And mine have come in the form of text and email, thank you. So, yes, they're doing a great job. My question is just a clarification. In the first paragraph, you talk about how we're moving a couple of graders and one off the list for sale. Do we know how we're going to try to sell that? Is it going to be through Purple Wave or some format? Or do we have somebody that's already interested in it? Just curious.
We have a couple of options here. I don't know whether it's eligible for a trade-in, but if you approve the purchase, you also need to approve the sale of that other, that we'll make that determination, whether we can trade that in.
I didn't know if it'd already been made.
Or we've sent it off.
Okay. So we need to include that in the motion that is before us?
Correct.
I'm not. I want to have a price of a leased vehicle so that we have options rather than take one purchase option versus what we've done in the past. I think that we should have the information so that the Board can discern whether it wants to continue with lease option or whether it wants to bid or purchase outright. And if we're going to purchase outright, we ought to know what they're going to give us in trade for our So I respectfully suggest that we table this till the 17th. I know I won't be here, but we could have that information. The Board could make that decision. It's a short period of time. I know you need the grader. But I think that we need to have options as to what we've done in the past, which is lease purchase. I realize that we have the funds available in the capital outlay, but we're going to have other demands on our budget. This is a substantial purchase, and we ought to be deliberate in the method by which we do it. Those are my comments. Any others from the Commission?
You want a motion to that effect?
Well, I think that ought to be discussed amongst us. If the majority of the Commission wants to purchase it, that's the way it'll happen. If we want to examine lease purchase, we ought to have those figures.
I just wanted to give one more comment on this, is that we currently have a motor grader on hold. If we table it, we will not get that motor grader. That's not going to be an option for us anymore. So we might be looking at end of the year, maybe next year, if we get a new motor grader, if we go through the... Yeah, that's part of the reason why we were looking at the outright cost instead of doing the lease, was because we had this one available now. So I just wanted to give you that information as well.
You didn't announce your presence. We all know you.
Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator.
All right. Commissioner Pitsney, anything else?
Oh, that was going to be my question, is if we jeopardize that. And she just answered it, that we would jeopardize the availability. That's why I ask right off if it is available. Maybe in future purchases, we need those options presented to us. Since we've got the funds available for this one, proceed with this one.
Are you making the motion?
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion that we proceed with purchasing the grader from Foley for $464,933 and let them figure out the disposal of the used machine at their discretion.
At the administrator's discretion?
Yeah.
I would second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the purchase of the new motor grader for the price as stated and to authorize the administrator to dispose of the replacement grader on terms suitable to the administrator. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? My comment is, is I don't mind losing this grader. We should have, in my opinion, been more deliberate in our purchasing process. There, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries four to one. All right. Next on our agenda is Jenny Newberry from our Assistant Administrator on MOU for the use of the ARPA funds.
You skipped one.
What did I do?
You skipped... Kelly.
I did completely. My fault. Thank you, everyone. Well, next here from Kelly Munyon, the Human Resource Director on the transition from sick and vacation paid time off.
I thought I was losing it. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. So this morning, Kelly Munyon, Human Resource Director. This morning, the Board is being asked to consider authorizing all Finney County staff to transition from accruing leave into separate sick and vacation banks into a combined PTO model. With this transition, we would also like to consider a few other employer-paid benefits that would coincide with this move. Up until March of '22, Finney County had provided all eligible employees paid time off for sick and personal time by accruing monthly into two separate banks. The amounts accrued were based off longevity. Over the years, the practice has evolved to using the separate sick and vacation banks interchangeably based off what the employee had available and their need at that time. On March 21st, 2022, due to the extended shift work of EMS technicians, a request was presented to and approved by the Board allowing for a pilot PTO model with Finney County EMS, while we worked on a new leave policy and determining if the move to a PTO model from the separate banks would be in the best interest of all county staff. With positive feedback from EMS as well as from many county employees, either directly to Human Resources or through their department directors, the department directors have collectively put together a new PTO and all-inclusive leave policy that is being presented today. Sam, if you could go to my presentation, please. So the next page, please. Back. Thank you. So on the screen there is our current model. We currently earn, as a new employee, zero to five years. Eight hours of sick that begins to accrue at 30 days of employment, and it is available to use as they earn it. Vacation in the first five years is also accrued at eight hours per month. It is not available, though, until six months of employment. And the amount of vacation increases by two hours every five years, maxing out at 16 hours per month. The sick leave does stay at eight hours, no matter how long you're here with the county. Sick and vacation currently are use it or lose it at year-end. The sick max carryover currently is 480 hours. The vacation max carryover currently is 192. So any amounts in excess of either of those in those banks are just simply lost. We do currently have a 240-hour max payout. That does benefit our retirees that were hired here prior to 7/1 of 1993 to maximize their benefits. So that is something we would like to keep in place. Sick leave is currently not paid out upon separation of employment. The current policy also states that sick and vacation must be used for all types of leave, workers' compensation, FMLA, personal days, bereavement, sick, et cetera. Next slide, please. So this is the model that we're proposing. This would be the PTO model. The PTO would accrue for employees based off scheduled hours and a pay period. Again, that multiplier would increase with longevity here at the county. But basing that off of scheduled hours, the employees who work excess overtime above the... I do know that EMS has built-in overtime, and they would be accounted for that. But others could not pick up a bunch of overtime and accrue more hours. But in that same breath, any employees on sick and vacation would continue to accrue because it is based off scheduled hours. And so for the sake of this, I just want to talk about the eight-hour employees. That second box there shows what the max possible accrual would be per year. And then the last box shows the carryover amounts. With this PTO model, since everything is now going into one bank, we would also like to set up an extended sick leave or critical bank that would be used for like an FMLA event to take care of a family member that was ill or maybe be out for your own illness. So we have set up some annual accruals, maxes, to be able to populate that extended sick leave bank. The first five years, we would move over 80% of the excess. The next year would be 85, 90. And then after 15 years, 100% of that would be able to be kept and not moved. Onto the next slide, please. So a couple additional proposals that we have for you, one being injury leave. This would be for workers' compensation claims. Currently, anytime an employee is entered at work, they are having to use their own sick or vacation leave to pay for the time off work, doctor's appointments, physical therapy, anything like that. We would ask that this be an employer-paid benefit. So what we possibly could be out there is if an employee is out seven days, the employer would pick up that seven days. It wouldn't be charged to the employee. But at day eight, the temporary disability payments would begin at 2/3 from workers' compensation, 1/3 by the county. There is a max on that of $804 weekly. And then at 21 days of employment, if the employee is still out of work, the first seven days would be accrued, excuse me, recouped by workers' compensation for the first seven days that we paid. We have very few workers' compensation claims that go to this level. Typically, they're just a few doctor's appointments in the beginning or maybe some physical therapy. The next we ask is for clinic...
Wait, I'm going to interrupt you there. Statutorily, seven days off is called the work penalty. And the legislature is the one who said, "We're going to penalize employees for having an injury at work and not pay the first seven days until they've been off for more than 21 days, and then we'll pay the first week." So is this policy only going to pay the first week for those who have not been off work for more than 21 days?
Yes.
Is there any congruence of what I'm hearing versus what workers' compensation will pay the injured worker if they're off for more than 21 days?
I don't... I don't have any information on that. Okay. The second ask is for the clinic leave, the GrowWell appointments. So any employees that go to GrowWell, they would still clock out and back in from those appointments. But we would receive a note from GrowWell of their appointment time, the time they left the clinic. The employees came right back to work. They would have this time given back to them to use GrowWell. One other additional that we ask is for an additional personal day, one day per employee per year. This could maybe be for their birthday or anything else. It's just simply an extra day off. This would not be allowed to be accrued or banked up. It would just be a use it or lose it benefit. Bereavement leave is currently charged to the employees. We ask that the employer pay the first three days of bereavement leave in an annual period. Anything exceeding that three days would be charged to the employees' PTO. Extended sick leave, we talked about a little bit. That would be the extended critical bank for employees. And excess PTO would be the way that that would be populated. And that would be for employees to use in the event of an FMLA event. Next, we ask for a shared leave policy to be implemented. The shared leave policy would be voluntary donation from county employees in the event that somebody had something catastrophic happen or a chronic illness, that they have depleted all their leave and had a need for some additional leave. The requests would be made by the employee. We would reach out to that employee's department first for donations and then out to the entire population. And then lastly, here, the additional holiday pay. Currently, all county employees are receiving 10 paid holidays per year regardless of working on the holiday or not, and regardless if that holiday falls on a weekend or a weekday. So the employees that actually pick up those shifts and work on the holiday, we were asking that they be paid time and a half and then their holiday pay on top of that. Can you go to the next slide? And then the last slide here just gives a breakdown, a snapshot of the comparisons of what we currently have versus what we are proposing. So the probationary period, sick is immediate. Vacation is six months. The department directors collectively decided on a three-month probationary period for PTO. The separate accrual amounts there in the next box, you can see the differences between what we currently have to what we are looking at going to. Longevity with our current policy tops out at 20 years. We have left that at 15 years for PTO. Sick and vacation at 192 and 480. The PTO max could be up to 256 on this new policy. Anything in excess would be moved over into their ESL critical bank with a new top out of 1,040 hours. Again, the holiday workers receiving the one and a half times their pay that they're currently not to work the holidays. We currently have no shared leave in place. We're looking for a policy to be implemented. We spoke about the injury leave, bereavement leave, we've spoke about. We currently don't have a personal day. We were just asking, since things were not apples-to-apples on the way they currently accrue to what we're proposing, we have added that additional personal day. The clinic leave, we've talked through. The extended leave, we've talked through. And then currently, the annual rollover is January 1 of each year. We have talked about moving that back to November 1 as to not have a skeleton crew in December trying to burn a bunch of leave. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the Commission?
I guess I'll start. On the bereavement leave, I kind of have a little problem with that. Define bereavement. Is this my best friend? This is my father? Is this the cousin I haven't seen for five years?
In our current policy, and we would leave the wording in there, it's immediate family members that would be entitled to this. Other would be charged to the PTO.
Still have a problem with that one.
What's the timeframe to see a draft of these changes in our personnel handbook before we adopt any changes?
I have all the drafts done, ready to be put in the handbook. I also have received a... This was something that the prior HR director had worked on with Hinkle. We have a redlined copy of the entire personnel policy that Hinkle had already went through. With that, we would like to incorporate this and get the entire personnel policy over to you to review.
I'm not inclined to even consider making these changes until we see what those changes look like in the personnel policy.
What people are going through all the same, your question about work comp.
Well...
Where are we on that?
Well, this is a benefit of the county paying to the injured worker the first seven days off if they're not off for more than the statutory requirement. This is a benefit of us also paying... This is a benefit of us also paying to the injured worker up to the statutory maximum the difference between the two-thirds that the insurance company pays under the Workers' Compensation Act, and we as an employer are making up the difference. In other words, rewarding the injured worker. The the whole problem with the Workers' Compensation Act is that you can't get enough money to the person who has been injured on the job under the Workers' Compensation Act. They ought to change that to the Employer Protection Act, but that's a political football. And then to those that we have chronic problems with, this is just an additional paycheck. How it's going to be handled, to me, the devil's in the details. How's it going to be handled? How are we gonna handle the withholding and so forth? I would like to see how that's all gonna work before I could personally consider extending an additional amount. And we're going through budgeting right now. We go right into a work session. What's the fiscal impact of these proposed changes?
I think it's.
Those are my questions.
I think the fiscal impact is, I'll get you some numbers on that and I'll get the entire personnel policy over with this put into it.
Well, I think that Kelly needs, and the administrator needs to hear from us as whether we're interested in implementing these changes. And if so, what's the timeline to consider them? Which is acceptable, which is not? Are there any personal tweaks of commissioners or the commission as a whole on how to handle this policy? This falls squarely in our lap to determine what the policy should be to carry that out by the administrator and Kelly and the HR. So, yes, yes, sir.
Chairman. And you can put the clock on me if you want to because I don't know how long this is gonna take. No, I.
Anyone?
I don't know. The, the, the concept of PTO, I believe, is valid. And I believe that that's in line with what other employers probably, on the private side, I'm more aware of, of others, like at the hospital and so forth. PTO concept's been in place for some time. So, so that piece of it, Mr. Chairman, to answer a part of your question, I'm, I'm okay with us switching from a vacation leave policy to a PTO policy. I too am, am a little bit concerned that we don't have the full picture before we're asked to make a decision. And so I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that whether it's a redlined copy or, or not, we need to see what that would do, both from a policy standpoint and from a fiscal standpoint. And then lastly, how do we, or do we know how this compares to private employers, other counties and so forth, as far as what others are doing? And, and I ask that question in the spirit of, we're trying to hire and retain employees. Is this going to help us do that? Or is it just simply for the current employees that we have here today that we're trying to make them feel better about their benefits? So PTO is, is a valid concept. I'm concerned on whether or not this is what will help us with recruitment and retention. But that may be proved to me to be a benefit for both of those things. And then what the policy and fiscal impact are, I don't think we have enough information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pretty good, couple minutes. Commissioner Reese?
I, I will agree with the PTO theory. I, I'm perfectly fine with that. I guess my issue is with some of the other things that I too would like to see how that plays out, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was an opportunity here for a straw poll of the employees sitting out here in the audience, if this is a desirable thing for employee satisfaction or if it's not.
Well, it is your time, sir. I'm not opposed if that's something.
Straw poll. Can we, we'll kind of go around. I see Doug here first, for or against this change? Doug used up half of my time, but.
Well, he did, but he also probably didn't get to be heard. The, the public didn't get to hear Doug. So Doug, would you embellish Commissioner Jones's faray into polling so that the public can hear your comments, please?
Doug Peters with Fannie County IT. In our office, we did discuss this more than once, and we went up to Kelly with some additional questions. Across the board, it's kind of a wash as far as what we see. From time worked to hours used in vacation time, it really comes out being about the same. So there really just was no strong feelings for or against. It was just a, yeah, this makes sense. It's easier to manage. It's fine. And that was from our department, all of us.
Thank you. You have time for a couple more?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, let me ask a question first. Anybody who would be opposed to this change sitting out there? That's a fast straw poll.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it. Thanks.
All right.
I have the entire personnel policy redlined and ready. I just need to put this inserted in there. I'll have all the highlight changes. No, but I think you'll need more than a couple weeks to review the entire personnel policy. I'm sorry. You may need more than a couple weeks to, to review that. So I would go a little bit further out, but I can get it to you guys sooner. I really don't think that it will, no, sir.
Yes, Commissioner, go.
Just a clarification. I saw here that you were talking about moving that from January one to November one. But how would that work? Are we talking November twenty-twenty-three?
So that, that would just be the, excuse me, that would just be the rollback. So if we could get this implemented for one-one to have enough education for the employees because we were gonna try for a mid-year, but consensus from employees back to me was one-one because they would like the education and understanding of all the changes. But that eleven-one would actually not be until eleven-one of twenty-four because it would be a rollback of that rather than one-one. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Finally, my comment is, is that whenever you're increasing paid time off, it is a benefit and it does have a fiscal cost. It may not be out of pocket, but it's, when somebody else is off work, somebody else has to pick up the work when they're gone. And so I want to have a clear understanding of, especially in our smaller departments, of how this is gonna work. And then is it going to impact us fiscally here when we're trying to set some pretty sharp edges into a budget for twenty-twenty-four? Those are my concerns, and I'd like to see those addressed. And I'd also like to see the devil's in the details.
Okay.
So why don't we tendively schedule this for August seventh?
Okay.
Does that seem to be, work all right, Mr. Administrator? Kelly, does that want to work?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right. Let's see the details then.
Okay. Thank you.
Kelly. All right. Next on the agenda this time is Jenny Newberry, our Assistant County Administrator, to discuss our MOU for our showcase.
Good morning. I am bringing before you the MOU describing the agreement for the use of the fifty thousand dollar ARPA funds that was approved by the board on May fifteenth. Presentation by Bob Kreitzer was made to request fifty thousand for five years, each year for five years, to support the startup of Western Kansas Career Exploration Showcase, allowing them to have a full-time paid staff, which had previously been done by volunteers only. The board at that time approved fifty thousand dollars from ARPA for two thousand and twenty-three to be distributed upon the signed MOU by both parties. Funding will be made to United School Administrators of Kansas, who will act as the fiduciary. Additional funding may be requested at a later date based on results. The MOU was based on conversation with fiscal committee and conversation that was held by you all and suggestions made during that commission meeting. And the alternatives would be to approve the MOU as presented and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Second would be with, to approve what changes made. And third, not to approve the MOU. I do have to note that there has already been a change made this morning for the name of Western Kansas. We had Western Kansas Career Exploration and Development Showcase, and we have marked the "and development." So it reads Western Kansas Career Exploration Showcase as the beneficiary of that. So I already have one, one change that has to be made on that. But we would recommend this MOU as presented with that one mark through to be allowing the chairman to sign on behalf of the board today.
Questions for Jenny? We have questions. Go ahead.
One question.
Go.
I thought we approved this on the fifteenth for payment, and why is it coming back up again? Why?
Yet to have the MOU. We did not have.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. President?
I, I was getting ready to make the motion, but if you want to do more questions before that.
Well, I want to give Mr. Kreitzer a chance to address that he's here on behalf of the showcase, make sure that this is gonna work for them. And I believe we have one more typographical there.
Thank you, sir. My name is Bob Kreitzer. I'm here on behalf of Western Kansas Career Showcases. I apologize for the necessary changes in the title of the organization. We've been meeting on a monthly basis and trying to get as many cumbersome words out of our activity as we can. So clarification, Jenny, if I could, is Western Kansas Career Showcases. And that way, we've taken a lot of words out. So when we're meeting with businesses, it makes it a little clearer. And I want to thank you very much for doing this. And I think the follow-through with Robert and Jenny has been fantastic in getting the legal documents right. One other item that comes up in the memorandum of understanding is a person on the board. Our board meets once a month. It's on the second Tuesday, and they're in Sablet at eight o'clock in the morning. Really nice and handy, but it works. We're working very diligently to get our September sixth. We've worked with Robert on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to have the showcase of essential services, which would be the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, EMS, emergency management, all of the other careers that you have that you need as a city and a county to keep everything going. And it would be here at the Fannie County at the Exhibition Building. So we'll be planning that. Those dates were critical because, as I explained to Robert at our meeting this, a week from tomorrow, we'll be sending it out to all of the school districts so we get it on their calendars. And it's very, very important to get it on there. So with those changes, we say thank you once again, and we look forward to having your board representative to attend any and all. And if they aren't able to attend, I'll be more than willing to come back and let you know what the board is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask you, Western Kansas Career Showcase, period or?
Yes.
Showcases?
Western Kansas Community Showcases, the plural, would be the preferable.
Western Kansas Career Showcases.
Yes.
Other questions for Bob? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny? Would you make those changes?
Mm-hmm.
MOU, delete exploration and add S after showcase?
Yes.
And with that, I would seek a motion to approve. That is the two typographical changes.
The S is the second one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize you to sign this MOU with the appropriate changes.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to sign the MOU as submitted, subject to the editorial changes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we turn to sign placement requests. County Administrator Reese, what are we doing? You can stay there if you like.
Sam, can you pull up that map up there? There we go. All right. We have a request from the city to put up a, oh, a speed limit warning sign, if you will, or a change in speed limit on Third Street just south of the bypass and north of the city limits, approximately three or four hundred feet. And the map indicates approximate location of where that sign would be placed. It is not a speed limit sign. It is just a notification or warning that change in speed limit is, is ahead. If, if it happened to be a change in speed limit at that location, engineers' study would have had to been done, and then you would have had to pass the resolution. But because it's just a notification in your right-of-way, all you'll need to do, if you agree to allow them to place it there at their cost and maintain it at their cost, you'll just need a formal motion to do so. Any questions concerning this?
I'll offer a motion.
The exact location of the sign is at your discretion since you're running public works right now.
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, approximately three to four hundred feet.
It's strictly for southbound traffic, correct?
Correct. Yes.
You know, we tried to put a stop sign there years ago with KDOT's approval and expanded light lit stop sign, and that has never happened because of bureaucracy and KDOT, so.
Stop sign where they're wanting to put this sign?
No, 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 going north.
Yeah, yeah. That was on KDOT property, and this is not one. So I'll be happy to offer a motion, Mr. Chairman.
What's your motion, sir?
My motion is to tell the city to go put their sign up and take care of it.
And is the location of the sign at the administrator's discretion?
That'd be good.
And at the city's expense for installment and maintenance?
Correct. Correct.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that allow the city to place the sign in the county right-of-way. Content of the sign according to the memorandum outlining this proposal in our packet to be at the expense of both installation and maintenance by the city. The exact location to be approved by the administrator. Is there any further comment on the motion?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. It won't be long till that will be in the city limits. So my comment.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dory, do you want to go through your upcoming events, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I can. This is just the, the regular list of upcoming meetings and events. It's got your regular things like the commissioner, the chamber breakfast. There is a town hall meeting later. No, that was last week. Sorry. But going forward, we've got the fair coming up in July and the NACO Annual Conference towards the end of July. Other than that, just regularly occurring meetings.
All right, and we substituted in there or added in July thirteenth for the commission's invitation to the reorganization of community daycare.
Yeah, I can add that. You're not gonna see this calendar again until after that, so. But yeah, it'll be in there. in there.
At least do that. Anybody that visits will know that that's on our calendar. Anything else under board governance from the commission? Then we will move to staff reports and development update from Mackenzie, please. Please let the public know who you are.
Good morning. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So I just have a quick update for you today. Last week, we did receive the updated eligible cost spreadsheet from Randall Estates, so we will start the amendment process for the RHID for that. But...
So how did Randall Estates come out with KDOT on the entrance thing?
We haven't heard yet. Yeah. Mm-hmm. And that's about it.
Questions? Rignan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dory, you have the floor to tell us about redistricting and discussion about how we want to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Fannie County Election Office is going to initiate a redistricting project to consolidate and clean up our voting districts or precincts. The redistricting will be based on the 2020 census data that we recently received and will reduce the number of precincts in Fannie County. When I took office in 2018, we had 28 precincts. We had to do some administrative cleanup in 2018, and we went up to 41 precincts. And after the legislative redistricting, we ended up with 71 precincts. We had some incredible cost increase with that, just because the number of ballots we have to print. It's also a burden on our poll workers when they've got, you know, 90 different ballot styles to manage for a primary that includes a constitutional amendment. So what we'd like to do is clean those up. I do have the authority to do that. In doing so, I also wanted to include you, should you so choose. Pursuant to KSA 19204, county commissioner districts are subject to alteration at least once every three years. And that would be at your discretion, whether or not we do that. The districts must be as compact as possible, and we have to use the most recent census data to do that. I have spoken with Trey, and if you will take a look at the map, on the next page, we've kind of mapped out the commission districts along with the population, both over and under 18, on that map. On the following page, I have a chart that indicates the variance to kind of the desired spot where we want you to be. So I took all the register, not all the population for Fannie County, the 38,470, dividing that by five as a kind of our desire for each of your districts as a number to shoot for. So using that number, we've got, you know, District 1 is about 40 under that right now, so probably a change is not required there. District 3 is 10 over that, so it's probably not a change required there. But for District 2, it's over 1,000 people greater than where we would want you to be. And then Districts 4 and 5 is about 1,000 as well. So I don't know if, I can work with Trey in GIS, and we can draw a map or two. If you would like to do the redistricting, we can give you an option or two. But really, what it's going to come down to is probably taking a look at District 4 and 5 and seeing if we can add a little to that from District 2. So we do have some opportunity there because they do touch in a couple of places.
My question is not so much on numbers, but how in the world did we go from 28 precincts, which we were back in the 80s, to 41 and now 71? And whose genius idea was that?
When I got here in 2018, I was just told to fix the precincts, so that's how we got to 41. A lot of it was some skip annexing done by the city. So there was a gentleman that he didn't want to be annexed into the city, so they let him stay in the county. So he was literally a precinct of his own because he didn't get annexed in, and he wasn't touching any other precinct, because the precincts have to be congruent, they have to be touching. And so he was his own precinct. So we had several things like that. And then there were some issues with the legislative lines, I believe, that we had to fix.
Does that allow the precinct, then, to have its own precinct committee person and committee woman?
It does.
Well, I don't like that.
I don't like that either.
So what's the plan on reducing this back to something manageable, say 30 precincts?
Yeah, so that's something that we'll look at. So we'll go look at the lines, see where things meet up. We may still have a couple of places where we've got the annexing where we're not able to, simply because that person's in the county, and they're not touching a county precinct, you know, a precinct outside the county. So we'll have to take a look at that. But that's something that we'll work on within the election office. We'll have to take a look at the legislative lines. If the commission's going to redistrict, we'll take a look at your lines and make sure that we do something manageable.
Other comments from the commission? I've burdened the...
It'd be interesting to see our, our commission districts be congruent too, because mine jumps all over.
It does. It does. And we can take a look at that as...
That would make, it makes more practical sense, you know, when you're trying to explain to somebody.
Yes.
But that's fine. Also, on the precincts, yeah, you need to put those, move the number backwards manageable. That's silly.
Mr. Chairman, to follow up with your question to Dory, but from the 41 to the 71, that was a state or...
That was legislative, yes. That was due to the legislative redistricting, and there's nothing we can do about it, whatever the Legislative Research Group comes and says, here's your new precincts. That's what we had to go with. So this is my first opportunity to clean those up, since that's happened.
But now we have the authority to back that down.
Yes, yes. And since we don't have a primary this year, we're able to do it kind of right now and get it ready.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're all clear and on the same page about that.
Well, I think it's important that everyone understand that precincts are democracy at work when one of our elected officials dies or resigns or retires. Long and the short is, is that precincts are pretty important, but it's also pretty hard to fill. And former member of this commission is our Republican Chair, and I don't, do not know who the Democratic Chair is and how many of those precincts actually have people that have been applied and elected. So long and the short is, one of the goals, I hope, from our commission is that we get this back down to somewhere manageable. And I would like a goal of 30, and I, I really liked 28 a lot better back in the 80s. You're talking to a person that's reviewed every primary election since 1984, and when you don't even know what Precinct 12 actually is, because of its spiraling change, it's very hard to know what the voting patterns are within our community. So if you ask the chief election officer, this falls into your bailiwick to make some suggested changes and also to eliminate precincts.
Yes, and I'll definitely take your, your comments into consideration as we do that.
I, what's the timeframe then to get this done? We don't have a primary, so then what's the timeframe, Dory, for...
We can't do anything within 90 days of the election, so we'll just back that off. So we've got to get it done.
But, well, by next month?
Yeah, we've got about a month to get it done. It's, it's not a lot of work once we figure out the mapping piece of it, so...
But August 7th is too late, is it not?
That'd be the, that'd be the 90 days.
Right. So this is something that we have to decide before July 17th is our next scheduled meeting?
Well, I'm, I'm going forward with my precinct changes, the redistricting that I'm doing for the commission districts. I would like to do those at the same time, but that is your bailiwick, so. If you can just agree by consensus, Trey and I can work on that as well.
Well, I think that you have to bring something back to us on the 17th of July, so that can be passed, so that it's in place 90 days prior to the election. So I'm not going to be here, so Commissioner Jones will be chairing that meeting and putting your work to work.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What I'm hearing Dory say is that the county commission by, by statute or regulation can, can redistrict every three years, and it's up to the commission. She's doing the rest of it. She's making an offer, I think here, if I'm reading her right, that she will draw the lines for the, for the county commission districts also while she's at it, if we will give her permission. So my, my feeling is, I happen to be in a district with more folks than anybody else, but I got also in that district a bunch of folks that don't vote. So, but my opinion is, let's, let's, Dory and Trey, with their, with their map, with their GIS mapping, draw some lines and present that to us for approval.
On the 17th.
And including the county commission districts.
As long as there's a reduction in the number of precincts, that'd be great.
So you guys will only be approving the commission district lines and boundaries? But yeah, we're definitely shooting for fewer precincts at costs.
What do you think our target is?
Huh?
What do you think our target is for the number of precincts? Because then the following year, we'll have precinct elections.
Yes.
In 2024.
Every two years, yes.
Yeah. So how many do you think we're going to have?
30.
I, I think 30 is a good target.
Very good.
We've got precincts now with absolutely zero population, so...
Well, precincts are important because I remember when they had to reappoint somebody to fill Russ's job, there were certain counties that had none, no representation in the input on who we chose to replace. You know, that's just, that's just the way the laws are written, and if a county didn't have anybody in place, they didn't get a voice.
You're, you're lucky that you've got a very active Republican Committee here.
Got a very active chairman here.
There's that.
Not me, that Dr. Clifford.
Yeah.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, it appears to me that if something delayed her with the districts for our county commissioners, that August 7th could be done. I mean, our first meeting in August could be done, because that'd be right on the 90 days to the election. But I'm, I'm okay with what you've suggested, but if she runs into a road bucket, it looks like we'd have one more out.
Okay. All right. Anything else under governance from the clerk?
No, sir.
County counselor report?
We started our meetings with the city regarding that NDS and our local agreement, so I think it was pretty productive as far as the first one went. We have plans for next meeting for that one, and some things that we need to bring back to kind of start working through to get that one kind of where it is, that we need to have it before we move forward. Have had various other contracts coming across my desk to look at in the meantime, and then just working through some of the other various legal matters with outside counsel.
I think it's fair to say publicly that our petition for review in American Wood versus Huber was granted by the Supreme Court?
Yes, it was.
Anything else?
No.
Question for her.
Go ahead.
Darryl, what's the status of our tax sale?
Been working on that one. It did have a little bit of a snag in the middle, only because of my car accident that left things a little bit behind for me, so, but working on that one and have been having some talks with one of the partners in my firm, so that we can move that one forward.
Anything else for the county council? County Administrator, sir?
Yes, I do want to recognize once again, and I know that Commissioner Grease and Fisher pointed out, but thank Public Works again for stepping out. We have three of the leaders that really pushed that, Gennaro, Kaylee, and Mackenzie back there in the back, that really has stepped up to get, get a lot of work done on the roads this last couple of weeks. So thank you and the, and the rest of the crews out there. I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that. Additionally, we did receive, went out for proposals on the county engineer contract. We received one recipient, we, one submittal. We'll review that this week and get back to you on, on that process. Still working with SMH, Slomire and Hancock on, on the sewer process, so we can get those bids out. Remember, we have money set aside from the ARPA funds to make those improvements, those needed improvements to the three districts, as well as that fourth pump station that's north in the industrial area. Additionally, last week, Sheriff's Office, Mike, Steve and Greg, we met with Andy Fermeier from Hutton Company, talked about the process for the LEC building, and not just that, but that, but the EMS, Health Department building, and then the upgrades for the Fair Expo building. And just a reminder, on the Fair Expo building, we did manage to get $100,000 through one of Shroody's grants for upgrades to that, to that facility, so we're going to need to move forward on that. But in all three cases, your next steps in essence is to engage a, an architect in all three cases, to begin that, the process of identifying, in the case of LEC building, what, what all the needs are. They, in fact, will be working with structural engineer and mechanical engineers to make a determination of what the extent is, so we can get a real grasp of, of those costs as we move forward. Once again, each one of these projects has its own funding source. As you recall, we did have the sales tax for the EMS ambulance building. We've been setting aside money through the annual budgeting process for LEC and, as well as the fair building as well. Reason why we reached out to Andy was that he was, he was, their firm was involved in the community corrections facility down south of the track. So since that was the latest major construction, we, we engaged him to talk a little bit about that process, and was it a good process? How can we improve on it? And so on and so forth. So that's, that's really where we're, we're at on that. I know that Sheriff Warren has reached out to his associates across the state of Kansas and asked who they've used. And the reason why that's so important is, is just from the standpoint of the continuity of operations. You have to maintain that facility and keep it operational and so forth. So we thought best to look at those that have been down that road a little bit and who have experience in, in keeping those things functioning as improvements have been made. And I don't know if he wanted to, if you want him to talk a little bit about what he's found out on, on, on that little bit.
I'd love to hear from the sheriff about the LEC. If you would, Sheriff, start out with a meeting we had with Rex and other persons at the LEC. I had the privilege of having that meeting and the outcome of that meeting and how that meeting was going to be useful going forward.
Sheriff Mike Warren, Fannie County. Yes, we started out, we had a contractor, I believe is what it was, that was on the facility back when we did the expansion and some remodel. I believe that was back in 2001. He came in, I know Rex gave him a list, and I think Mr. Kreitzer did the same from his knowledge of the building, from when his company worked on it. So there's a lot of issues, mechanical, we got plumbing issues, we got the HVAC issues. There's been some structural issues that were pointed out that I wasn't aware of at the time from our jail staff, from the expansion, there's some cracks in the wall. I can't remember the guy's name. Um, I can't remember the guy's name, Dwayne, like, his last name fails me, but, um, he had a lot of ideas of how we could move forward with, uh, fixing the building, plumbing, uh, issues like that. And then we met with, um, Andy and he, uh, proposed several different ideas, basically pretty much like, like this, uh, Dwayne did with, uh, how we could proceed forward. And his, pretty much his thoughts were to hire an architect and get started that, that way and, uh, let him come in as a design and, and he could do the, uh, contracting for us, I guess, with the other engineers as, as he sees fit. Obviously with approval, uh, he, he wouldn't just hire them without your approval, but he could certainly get them started and, and help us to, uh, get started in that direction.
Questions for the sheriff?
Any estimate on a timeframe?
Timeframe? I guess that's up to, first of hiring the, uh, architect. I think that's where we need to start. Uh, my understanding is, and I, I think Mr. Reese can, um, explain probably more of that, that on hiring the architect, I believe we can just go out and hire one of the, I don't believe we have to take a bid on that by statute, um, so we could get him started whenever, uh, I guess the money's there, uh, to do that. So that could be very quickly. And, uh, we have reached out, Andy, uh, gave us the name of a, uh, arch, uh, yeah, architect that's working, I think, in this area already down in Morton County. I think Grant County's looking at building a new facility, Morton County's doing the same. Uh, he's working with them throughout the state. Uh, his name was mentioned, uh, to me that he was a good one. There was another company, I think out of Lawrence that a lot of the sheriffs have used. So, got a couple of different options that I, I believe are very good that, I, I think the big thing we want to look at and, and Mr. Reese and I have been discussing this is get an architect, somebody in here that really works with jail settings. And I think that's what we need is, is somebody to look at that jail and see what it's gonna take to fix it. I believe the Mancini firm was, uh...
It was Vince.
Yes.
On the second half.
Yeah. And I believe they used the same one, I think, on the original building, I believe. And my underst-
From a commissioner's standpoint, uh, when do you need us to approve an architect? And how soon are you ready to pull the trigger on it?
I, I think we're ready to pull the trigger on architects. Like I said, we've, we've been setting some money aside. The sales taxes have been accumulating here for a few months on, on the EMS facility and that's what we were waiting to, um, get a little money set aside so we can hire an architect. Once again, through the budgeting process on an annual basis, we've been able to set aside money for the LEC building to hire an architect to get the reels rolling. Once we have an idea of what the, um, what the scope of the work and improvements are for the LEC, you know, then you'll, then you'll have to figure out, are, are we gonna have to issue some temp notes on this? Is this gonna be bonded out, um, or capital lease purchase if, if that's available to us? Those are the type of things we're gonna have to deal with on that. Same way really with the EMS Health Department, but you do have a dedicated, uh, revenue stream to, um, to in essence, um, retire that debt. The Fairgrounds facility, uh, once again, we're waiting on that HUNDA report to make it, to, uh, help us, aid us in the extent of the, uh, improvements to that facility. Uh, but you do have some money set aside in that one as well. Um, not, not just the grant, but, uh, also about another a hundred and fifty thousand or more that we set aside. So, that one there, um, we can do in steps if need be, so you won't have to, um, issue long-term bid or anything on that if, if not required.
On the, is this on the four-H building?
On, on the Expo Center, yes, uh-huh.
We're talking about the small building, correct?
No, no, the big, big building.
The big one.
Uh, Shrewdy got a grant for the exhibition building or for the four-H building?
For, for this one here, the exhibition building, yeah. In essence, we're, because we utilized that during, during COVID, uh, she went to the state to see if a portion of those monies that she received from that could be utilized to help improve that. We severed off a hundred thousand dollars to help improvements because it, it was utilized during that time and is identified within the county plan as a shelter. So that's, that's how we were able to set aside that money. It has a suspense date of, uh, June thirty twenty-four.
The meeting that we had and the scope of the work document that was prepared, is that what we're going to give to the architect or is the architect gonna have free rein to decide what scope of the work needs to be?
I, I think he'll, he'll have that as a beginning point, but ultimately they're gonna do whatever processes they go through to do a complete assessment of that facility. Um, because it, my understanding is that you've, you've got some general knowledge of these are the things that we're aware of, what else do you see? It's kind of like when we, in the Expo Building down there at the, um, Fairgrounds, we brought in a structural engineer to make certain that that facility was structurally sound to even invest money in. And so, I think that's the same process we've, we're going through with the LEC facility. And according to Mike, I think his sources have identified two good firms within the state that have experience in those types of structures to keep things, uh, operating, uh, while improvements are being made. And he, and you can bring them both in and, and, um, interview them both and make a determination from that who you want to select on that. Uh, the other two facilities, you can, you can use, uh, local firms. You just find them forward and back.
Okay. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I'd like to move the LEC along. So what's the best move going forward to move this, um, discussion to hiring the architect?
My suggestion is to bring in those two firms that, that Mike has engaged in, or at least has identified, I don't know if he's had, uh, conversations with. And, and maybe bring in, um, have a couple of commissioners sit in on a, um, little bit of an interviewing process. Once again, for professional services in the state of Kansas, you don't have to go out for competitive bids or competitive proposals.
Which two commissioners would like to volunteer to meet with the administrator and the sheriff and the two architects to be interviewed? Commissioner Grease, you're appointed. Anyone else?
I'm willing, just depending on schedule, but, but I'm willing-
In their own schedule.
Okay. You, you got Wheat Harvest, but we're gonna, are we're gonna meet with them and what's the timeline?
Don't know. I'll ask Mike if, if he can reach out to them and we'll go, and we'll get some, we'll get some dates put together.
All right. Commissioner Pishney, you're it. Very good. Uh, they'll, they'll meet with you, uh, you guys make a recommendation so that the board can approve it at the next available meeting, whether that's the seventeenth or the seventh of August. I'd like to see this move. That's, it's not getting any easier and the LEC might be better, easier to work on in the wintertime if we can get going. We've got to also determine with the administrator's help, the methodology of funding. It is so that everyone's aware that we're all gonna have sticker shock. This is a project that's gonna approach ten million bucks or maybe more. So, it's worth investing in our building, but, uh, once again, let's make sure that it's mechanically square, engineering square before we're gonna invest ten more million in it. And of course, it's your building, Sheriff. We'd like to make sure that it functions the way that it should. Any other comments from the commission? Very good. Other, uh, report from the administrator?
I have nothing else, just, uh, other than our work session for this, uh, coming up here a little bit later on.
All right. We're going to take a break and meet with that work session. Let's, uh, go ahead then and close the regular session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
You want board reports?
Oh, excuse me, of course I want board reports. How silly of me, two mistakes in one meeting. Any chance you guys would fire me?
No.
No.
Thought so. We'll start on the left, Commissioner Davy Jones.
I'll be, uh, real, very quick. The only thing I did was attended the, uh, retirement reception for Don Boyd and, uh, she and Ra, and her husband, Robert, are now Oklahoma residents, so they were moving, uh, the next few days, three or four days after her retirement. So, that's it.
Commissioner Grease?
I have no report other than the usual phone calls and observations about our road conditions.
Thank you. Uh, without a doubt, uh, we have, uh, been really blessed with a lot of water and a lot of problems to have. Kudos to the people that have put in the extra hours. I hope you get the overtime that you deserve and also, uh, to those people who have communicated with the commission, uh, keep up the good work of making sure we understand what the problems are so that we can hand them on in order to be properly addressed. I met with, uh, the county attorney with regard to, uh, remodel improvements that she wants to suggest to the commission. I rep, I met with, uh, the folks who went to Congressman Mann's listening tour at the community college. It was a good event. I attended the Live Well Health Coalition on getting involved with politics at St. Catherine's. I visited Russell Child Development Center and participated in Governor Kelly's Task Force on Children Welfare where once again, uh, we were told that despite our hundred and twenty days waiting on an application, that we were not alone, but that we had some ideas, maybe with direct communication to the governor's office, that there was hope at the end of the rainbow for our Third Street approval for the Fannie County, uh, Children's Network. Finally, I wish to report that Compass did not have a monthly board meeting in June. It's their month off, but the administrator's report, uh, advised that as of July first, they were a designated, uh, BHCC, uh, company and that is wonderful news for our community. They have hired new, eighteen new employees with a target of sixty-two. This is a big deal for our community and a big deal for our area of mental health that we sponsor in Fannie County, Fannie County in support with a mill levy. So that is my report and on to Commissioner Pishney.
First of all, I missed some of those activities last week, uh, due to being out of town and I think, uh, Commissioner Larry, uh, did go to economic development in my, so I'll let him, uh, cover that one for me. A couple of things I handed to you, each a handout I received from, uh, the meeting up in Colby, uh, that was put on by KDOT and it's about the vehicle technology that they're gonna have on Highway eighty-three. Uh, and it's, uh, just the thing here gives you, uh, kind of their, what they're going to be doing, but it's about a seven to eight million dollar project that they'll, uh, try to have, uh, completed by the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. And they, uh, yeah, well, start at Oakley and come to Garden City, but it's just for the technology piece. Uh, and if you want to learn more about it, you go to candrive.org, K-A-N-D-R-I-V-E.org. The thing I was disappointed about is this is being done before any passing lane or four lane, which is still in the hopper, uh, for consideration. Uh, so it's not gonna be a dig once thing. They are using their existing right-aways that KDOT has, uh, but when they get ready to expand the highway, they're gonna need more, uh, right away and they'll probably have to reposition this, uh, fiber. Uh, but there's gonna be, uh, a lot of conduit in that fiber or in that, uh, trench and some of it will be for KDOT and some of it will be for other uses. Uh, so that two-page hand, or the front and back handout is just what I picked up from that session. Uh, secondly, I, I think that each of you probably received an email about our KP, KLPG annual, uh, meeting is going to be in haze this year, uh, at the, uh, in, uh, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And, uh, I will plan on attending that. Hopefully some of the rest of you can as well. I did attend, uh, a, a roundtable discussion with, uh, Senator Marshall when he was here, uh, that he was asking for input with regard to local government and education and so forth. Uh, a last thing that I think I have on my, well, just a ending comment, but the last item is, uh, Representative Clifford and I have been visiting about the LA, LAVTR. I never can get that acronym quite straight. And he's still working on, uh, pushing the legislature to appropriately fund that, which would help offset some of the tax, uh, property tax burden in our counties. The legislature has chosen to ignore their, their own law, its, its own law, uh, for many years. However, there was an article in an, in a NACO newsletter the other day headlined, "Wisconsin Passes Game Changer for County Funding." And I passed this, uh, article on to Representative Clifford because if we are unsuccessful with LA, LAVTR, uh, maybe this is a, a backup plan and that is, in Wisconsin, they just recently passed a bill to have the state return part of the sales tax it collects back to the counties within Wisconsin to help alleviate some of the property tax burdens. So, I think there's a couple of ways that the state can help us, uh, out in, uh, the local government, at, at local government level. And so I did share that with Representative Clifford so that he would have some other ammunition as he goes into these committee meetings and so forth about LAVTR. Lastly, just a, a personal, uh, comment. We were at a national volleyball tournament all last week in Chicago and we've attended a lot of volleyball, uh, matches, uh, over the last several years with our granddaughters. I am so impressed at these national tournaments, or, excuse me, at these big tournaments, including the national one, there's about ninety volleyball courts, balls and whistles and, and so forth. But at seven forty-five each morning, everything stops. I mean, there's not a ball, there, uh, bouncing, there's not a whistle blowing, there's not a person, uh, saying or doing anything for the National Anthem. And they have someone singing the National Anthem to begin these tournaments at seven forty-five prior to the eight o'clock match. And it is so touching, uh, not just the quality of the singing, but the message that our National Anthem has, uh, that I, each time I have tears in my eyes and I just think it's worth mentioning and highlighting, uh, uh, about what America is all about, especially on this Fourth of July, uh, week. And lastly, tied to that, one of our cab drivers came from Iran, been driving a cab for forty years. He said, "I've lost money, I've made money, but this is the land of opportunity where I can do either." And I just, uh, think that that experience we had this past week highlights the reason for July fourth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones?
Oh, busy, two weeks. Um, first of all, I had a JDC meeting and Beth is always in need of more secured care. Um, look, she's looking at converting some more facility back to secured care. The demand is there. Uh, met with, um, Tracy Mann along with commissioners and, um, also met with Scott Schwab, uh, in a small group and, um, quite interesting. He was very complimentary of our clerk and her way she runs elections and he said if all the counties ran them like our county did, there'd be no problems in his office. And so then they had, um, Fannie County Economic Development Meeting, also, um, had a, uh, the, followed up with a childcare meeting at Russell's Child along with, uh, our chairman. And, um, I think we expect, expressed our thoughts to the folks from Topeka very bluntly about what we thought of their, um, licensing process. Uh, hopefully that'll, it'll cause some action to be happen. Uh, had an FCCA meeting, um, they're pursuing, um, remedies to their old building. I've got a whole stack of pictures and things they've taken of their problems there. And so, um, they've got a, a big, uh, want list. Also had, uh, attended the meeting with the county attorney on the remodeling and various other sundry things. Other than that, that's what I've been doing.
Thank you. That concludes our regular session. We're going to move into a work session, and so we need to have a motion to adjourn from regular session.
Remove, we adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn from regular session. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Do we have a short break?
Yes, until 10 after. How about twelve minutes?
Okay.